Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council in regular session. It is Monday, November 3rd, 2025, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Counselor Kohler.
Here.
Counselor Cross.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Counselor President Starr.
Here.
Counselor Christopher.
Here.
Counselor Duran.
Here.
Youth Counselor Guptil.
Here.
And Counselor Parsons.
Counselor Parsons is excused this evening. Tonight is my pleasure to welcome Weebleo PAC 7012, and ask them up to introduce themselves, and then they will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up. So if you would each say your name, and what grade you're in.
My name's Kennedy, and I'm in fourth grade.
Okay.
My name is Luke, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Bessin, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name's Tristan, and I'm in fourth grade.
This evening, I had the pleasure of bringing them in here to talk about what it is to be a city. They had some great questions about elections and about civics. Great job to their leader and the parents for helping them learn so much. And I've asked them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise? Go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much, and thank you very much. Let's give a hand to our Weebleos.
Do they know what Weebleo stands for? We Be Loyal Scouts. We Be Loyal Scouts.
There it is. Okay. It is now my pleasure to introduce the Chair of the Tribal Nation of the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians, Dolores Pixley, and invite her to say a few words, and then I will be making the presentation of the proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. Welcome. We are honored to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. I was here an hour early. But I very much appreciate being recognized here in the Valley. Our tribal government is made up of about 5,700 people. And Soletz is the largest population, but Salem is the second largest. And I live here in Kaiser, and so we appreciate the acknowledgement. And we really enjoy doing business with the city of Kaiser, on the Kaiser Station and the Chamales Station. And we just had a meeting with Chamales Station today, and we have some very good new vendors that will be in those empty buildings. So I appreciate that. This year, we're celebrating 47 years of tribal restoration. We were terminated from the recognized tribes in 1954, and we were restored November 1977. And so we have a big celebration in Lincoln City. We have a really nice program that starts at 10 o'clock if anyone's interested in attending. And then we celebrate at 6 o'clock with a powwow that fills the casino. So we're really happy to be here and to be able to participate with the city of Kaiser. And I'm almost a lifelong resident of Kaiser, so I really appreciate the work that you do. And I know it's some pretty trying times, and we've been extremely busy trying to keep up with everything that's happening in the government. And we're a self-governance tribe, and so for funding purposes, we get all of our funds upfront. We compact all the money that's due the tribe, and so we're able to keep functioning business as usual. And I just got word today that the SNAP program is going to be funded from November 1st, and now people will receive half of their benefits for November, and so that was good news. And I know everyone in Oregon's concerned about it. And so I just want to thank you all for having me here today.
It is always an honor to have you here with us and to be able to show our appreciation and respect for the tribal nations, the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians, and our other tribal nation that is here in the Kaiser area, the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde. So with that, I would like to make this presentation of this proclamation to you. I will read it, and I would love to give you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the lands in the Willamette Valley on which the people of the city of Kaiser reside are acknowledged as the historic home of the Kalapuya, ancestors of the members of both the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians. And whereas many acts of injustice, broken treaties, and laws for exclusion of Native Americans have occurred since non-Native peoples came into these lands. And whereas we need to remember that tragic history and continue to commit ourselves to a just and equitable future for all people in our Kaiser community. And whereas the many cultural and ethnic communities now living in the city of Kaiser and the Willamette Valley benefit from knowing and celebrating the heritage, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans. And whereas the city of Kaiser wishes to continue to acknowledge and honor all the Native American tribal nations and their ancestors. Now therefore, the Kaiser City Council assembled here in regular session does hereby proclaim November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month. Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you.
Counselor Christopher.
Thanks so much. So Dean, I was just talking this morning, and we're going to work together on the Kalapuya Calendar Exhibit that's going to be at the Kaiser Heritage Museum. It doesn't happen until '27, but we've got plans in the works. And in fact, she's going to get me hooked up with a tribal member who is a master weaver, correct? Yeah. And he's going to do our program next November, which is our, it's first called First Tuesday, and it's an art demonstration. So we're going to get that done. And I just wanted to tell you, we had the best intentions of getting our dang banner up today, and Mother Nature intervened. And it was too blowy and too windy, and we thought, the person that puts it up for us says, "I just don't feel safe." Tomorrow, your banner goes up, and it'll be in front of the Cultural Center for the entire month.
Today was a bad day for a lot of things.
It was a bad day, man. He said, "I can do it," but I said, "Wait till tomorrow."
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
It is now my privilege to invite up retired Colonel Kevin Dial, who is known to just about everybody in this community. Kevin Dial is an Oregon native who retired from the military in 2017 after serving for over 35 years in key leadership positions and deploying to Afghanistan in 2011. His last assignment was the Director of Operations and Training for the Oregon Army National Guard, where he oversaw soldier training, worked in domestic operations, disaster response, and was part of the team that developed the first Oregon Cascadia Response Plan. He is the father of many children, both biological and add-on blessings to the family. And since his retirement, he has worked in the nonprofit space where he spends most of his time on veteran issues and works full-time for Valor Mentoring, where he leads programs that supports the mentoring of youth and young adults. And he's here tonight to talk to us and receive a copy of the National Veterans and Military Families Month Proclamation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. City councilors appreciate the time tonight. As I get to talk tonight, I get to say thank you from service members, veterans, and the families of service members who are very fortunate to live in the city of Kaiser, where the words "value, pride, spirit, and volunteerism" are more than just a motto on a wall. Time and again, this city has stepped up. Its staff, its citizens have gone above and beyond the call of duty to rally around our service members and their families during times of crisis, disaster, and public emergency. Like many public servants, our military members are called on to protect our freedoms. We understand that service often means someone has to bank a price and pay a price, and it's personal. Too many times, our service members don't remember it's their families that are paying the larger price. And today, as this proclamation honors those who serve and their families alongside of their service members, we are honored and thank you again for the time that you have spent as a city to support us and our families. Thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you, Colonel. I'll now read the proclamation. Whereas the city of Kaiser recognizes and honors the strength, commitment, and sacrifices of the families, caregivers, and loved ones of our nation's veterans and active-duty service members. And whereas military families' dedication and perseverance are vital to the strength of our armed forces and the fabric of our nation. And whereas the constant transitions, relocations, and challenges faced by military families require extraordinary resilience. And whereas the families and caregivers' service, support, and sacrifices require personal courage, devotion, and strength. And whereas the people of Kaiser respect, honor, and appreciate the families and caregivers who care for veterans returning from service and to those who carry the memory of loved ones who gave their lives in defense for our country. Now therefore, the people of the city of Kaiser want to express our gratitude to all who have served, to those who continue to serve, and to the families who stand beside them. And furthermore, the Kaiser City Council assembled here in regular session does hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Veterans and Military Families Month, and encourages all residents to honor our veterans, service members, their families, and their caregivers through acts of recognition, gratitude, and community support. National Veterans and Military Family Month.
Ready? Set? That's it, Kevin? So also Kaiser per citizen, whose county?
No. Come on out. We are now going to go to committee reports, and we have Jesus Escobar to talk to us about Kaiser Public Arts Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Last time we met for the Kaiser Public Arts Commission, we discussed about the possibility of adding storm drain art into the master plan. And the master plan is also something else that we are updating and currently in the works and getting to you guys by December, by next December. So this month is when we'll be reviewing it, so then by next month, we should have something for you guys. Yeah, that's kind of what we all talked about.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Christopher.
So Jesus is brand spanking new to K-PAC, and so of course, we threw him to the wolves, y'all, and made him come do the report. So they've been working on the master plan for a couple of months because they wanted to add the street art to it. It's not in there yet, so we can't fund it because it's not in the master plan. And then Tammy Saldivar came to us and asked about the storm drain art, which the committee also loved. And so since we were in the middle of updating that, they decided to do it all at one time. And the next meeting is more like a work session to finish the master plan and then try to get it to City Council in December so that you can approve it, so that we can figure out what 2026 looks like and get some projects on the book for when the weather is permitting. Right?
Right, correct.
Yeah. So I just wanted to fill in for poor Jesus, who, first time, but he did great.
I tried to practice, but I didn't have time.
You might want to mention if there's anything going on Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday this week? I'm doing an art auction to benefit Richmond Elementary. It's something that I started with 12 other artists, local Oregon artists, who are donating our artwork to raise money for their music department as well as for the World Beat and for the Salem Public Library Foundation.
And where is it at?
It's going to be at the Mission Mill, well, the Willamette Heritage Center. The goal for this is to be an annual thing going forward. This is the first year, and next year, I definitely am going to focus on Kaiser, just so you guys know. Going to be helping out Cummings Elementary and hopefully something for the library here that we have.
So 1 to 9, 1 to 9 at the Willamette Heritage Center, Jesus and a number of other artists. I could give you a ride. I'm already going.
Sounds wonderful. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I saw something on the emails about raps. What's going on with those?
Do you want to speak?
Well, we were talking about, like, I think we were going through some applications.
We're funded for three.
For three.
And so we can do, our budget includes three reps a year. And so we are doing solicitations right now on social media. And if anyone's listening and if you're an artist, and if you need help with the art, I can help you. Like, if you'd like to sponsor a utility rap, any businesses that might be present tonight in the room, I could help you determine art and give you Jesus. And we have a lot of other artists with Kaiser Art Association. So you don't have to be the artist. All you have to do is write the check. They cost about $1,000 per rap, and we anticipate the raps will last five to seven years. So we would love to have you bring your ideas and join us. We want to do three this year, but we have room to do more, but we don't have the funding. So if they're privately funded, we could do, we've got about, we've done six, and I think we have 10 left to do. So let's cover the town with art. Let's do it.
All right. Any further questions? The lack of enthusiasm is incredible. Anyway, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, yes. Was there anybody else here for a committee report? Okay. Anybody here for a neighbor association report?
Where is everybody?
It's raining.
Tell me.
Youth Counselor Guptil, do you have anything to update us with tonight?
I don't.
All right. Thank you. All right. Let's go then to Item 5A, which is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendations for Appointments, Multimodal Safety Committee, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Planning Commission Youth Liaison. Ms. Bessin.
Right, Mayor and City Councilors. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met in October to review applicants for city boards and commissions. They recommend the following appointments. Talia Mesakar as Planning Commission Youth Liaison for the 2025-2026 school year. Michael Welsh and Hirsch Sangster to the Multimodal Safety Committee through 2028. Tanya Hamilton, Mike Pantalone, and Gwen Carr to the Parks and Recreation Advisory through 2028. Staff recommends the council approve these appointments.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the recommendations or the staff report? Counselor President Starr.
I move the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Talia Mesakar as Planning Commission Youth Liaison for the school year term of 2025-2026. Michael Welsh to position number one, and Hirsch Sangster to position number two on the Multimodal Safety Committee for the term expiring December 31st, 2028. Tanya Hamilton to position number one, Mike Pantalone to position number two, and Gwen Carr to position number three on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2028.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee as read. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Thank you to all the people who are volunteering for these committees and commissions. That concludes committee reports. We're going to now go to public comment. This time is invited for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have, what, two public hearings this evening? A resolution adopting user fees for the Kaiser Electric Vehicle Charting Station and an order in the matter of amendment of rates for franchise solid waste collection within the city of Kaiser. If you're here for that, please stand by. So under public comment, I would like to invite up two very special guests, Beth Schmidt and Antonio Gemmell from Salem-Kaiser School District. We're going to talk about Safe Ross School and Ruby Bridge. We're going to talk about Safe Rouse to School and Ruby Bridges. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Beth Schmidt. I'm the Salem Kaiser Safe Rouse to School Program Coordinator. And I now have our Tanya with me. Go ahead.
I'm our Tanya Gemmell. I am a principal on special assignment with our Salem Kaiser School District, and I support our state and federal programs and our Office of Student Equity Advancement and Access.
We're here this evening to talk a little bit about Safe Rouse to School. As most of you know, Safe Rouse to School is a program that teaches pedestrian and bicycle safety and some transit safety education. We do education and engagement such as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. This year is especially significant with the passage of Senate Bill 450. Now in Oregon, it had bipartisan support. It has passed and the whole state of Oregon will now acknowledge and recognize every November 14th as Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. So we're really excited. In the bill, it says Salem Kaiser Safe Rouse to School, so that has special recognition. Ruby Bridges Foundation, she says she's really excited. She knows what we're doing here in Salem and Kaiser. This is the third state in the United States of America to pass this bill and this recognition. So we're all very proud of it and we're getting excited for next week. And one thing I would really like to note that I'm very, very proud of, along with my partnerships, you know, like right now, but Salem Kaiser Public Schools this year has done a very significant thing that I'm really happy about. They have purchased all four of Ruby Bridges books and they will donate them to all 42 elementary schools. So that is a massive, massive, just a win, you know? We get to talk about Ruby Bridges more and I think it's a great, a great positive outcome going forward. And the walk will still happen and it's growing each year. So yeah, I mean, here we are, year four. I'm really excited. Thank you for this. Are you going to read it or do you want me to do? Sorry. Any questions? Anything I can help with?
So what Beth is referring to is that we have issued a proclamation for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day as we have done for the last three years prior to this, because this has been an important effort on the part of our Safe Rouse to School Program. Do you know how many of our elementary schools in Kaiser will be participating this year?
I mean, I have a ballpark.
Okay. We'll go with the ballpark.
Okay, one.
Okay, one so far. Which is?
Clear Lake.
Clear Lake. Okay. And do you know what time that starts? Is it eight o'clock or?
Depending on weather.
Gotcha. So what would be helpful for those of us who would like to come and participate and support, if you can get that information to Ms. Biset, she will get it to us.
I'd be happy to do that.
So we can walk with the students. And I wanted to call out our police for being so supportive of the Ruby Bridges, but also the other walk to school events that are put on by Safe Rouse to School.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really proud of our partnership. I appreciate it very much. And I, it just changed times. So that's why I couldn't give you a time yet because they said they might go later on if the weather was bad. Remember, they were in pouring rain last year. And so I was like, I don't know, Talia, you know? I'm really excited this year. I think one thing that I'm most proud of also is I'm trying to help each school to become a champion of their own Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. So a lot of times the school has their own motto, their own theme, and then they sort of, you know, wrap that alongside this walk. Myers Elementary, they have kindness matters. At Battle Creek Elementary, it's you belong here. And every, every school has their own genuine way of helping a child or a family or community member feel like they belong. So this is an opportunity for us to really partner with the school district and help each school become a champion of their own Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. Because essentially over time, we'll have 42 elementary schools and everybody will be walking. And so, you know, what does that look like in the future? So helping everybody become a champion of their own event is, is a great idea going forward.
I love it. Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I got a message that said, well, what is Ruby Bridges and why are we really doing this? What's, what's it all about?
Can you tell us about Ruby Bridges?
I'm going to, I'm going to leave you the floor.
I already talked to you. Go ahead. Okay. I mean, we can share. Ruby Bridges was a six-year-old little girl who was the first African-American student who was walked into an all-white school that ended segregation in schools on November 14th, 1960. She was in the first grade. She was the only black student in her class that went to school. She was, you know, escorted into the school by four white federal marshals. She was walked past many, many, many people who were very hatred. They were very angry. They spit on her. They called her names. They told her they were going to poison her. They were going to kill her. They didn't want her there. They held up, you know, little black babies in coffins because they were going to kill her. And she was six years old and she didn't really know what was happening. But she became one of our civil rights icons in American history. And to this day, she just turned 71. She is very active in the United States and, and she leads in a way of such heartwarming kindness. She just asks that it be a day of dialogue in which we talk about anti-racism and anti-bullying. And she wants to lead with love. She definitely doesn't lead with any ill. She's a really beautiful human and the fact that she wants to share that with generations of children who continue to come to school and learn about her is a beautiful opportunity.
Thank you very much. Great question. Any other questions for our wonderful guests here tonight? So we look forward to joining you on Those Who Can on the 14th and any other walk to school and back to school events that happen this year. Thank you for your hard work for the safety of our kids as they travel to and from school and to and from other destinations in our community. We appreciate your partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone? I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment tonight. Was there anyone else who would like to address the council tonight? All right. Well, thank you so much. Let's go now to the consent calendar. Council President Starr, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Our consent calendar for tonight reads item A, Approval of the October 20th, 2025 Regular Session Minutes. Item B, Approval of the October 27th, 2025 Work Session Minutes. And item C, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Administrative Services Agreement with Mission Square Retirement.
Thank you. Are there any polls? Councilor Kohler.
B, please.
Pulling B? Okay. Anything else? Okay. Council President Starr?
I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendars, items A and C.
Second.
Consent calendar, items A and C have been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Councilor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Would you handle this next motion? I need to go talk to, um, real quick. Thank you.
I, I was not able to attend the work session on the 27th. I went to try to hear the recording. I never could get it to come up, so I have to abstain.
Any other comment for on item B? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the October 27th, 2025 Work Session Minutes.
So moved. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the October 27th, 2025 Work Session Minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously, or actually one, I can't count now, one, two, three, four, for an approval with one abstention and one excused, Councilor Parsons. Oh, just a second. Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council President Starr. Let's go to public hearings. Did you open it? Okay, let's open a public hearing then. Public hearing, item 8A, Resolution Adopting User Fees for the Kaiser Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council Assistant City Manager Tim Wood has this item.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. As we discussed at the last city council meeting, we are going to move forward with charging a fee for the use of the electric charging station. The recommended fee is 30 cents per kilowatt hour. Based on this rate, we can anticipate, it's obviously going to depend on how many people use the charging station, but we could anticipate anywhere between $2,600 and $13,000, somewhere in that range. The fees associated with using it will be reinvested to pay the electricity, maintenance, those kind of costs. In addition, anything over that would be used to keep the, the system up and running, reinvest into the infrastructure there. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the city council if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report or the proposed resolution? Council President Starr and then Councilor Christopher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood, what happens when somebody leaves their car plugged in and charging overnight?
Good question. Right now, once it hits the maximum charge, it just basically stops, puts it on hold and will not continue to charge it anymore. So what you're probably referring to is after it reaches 100% charge, it turns into a waiting period. We have the ability to charge for the waiting period because it's not actually going to be charging if it's not actually pulling any electricity. And we have that capability. During October, the average session was just under four hours. And of that, about 45 minutes of that was wait time. So people are regularly moving their vehicles as they need to, so that we're not seeing a lot of wait time.
Follow up? But if, if we have people that are leaving them plugged in overnight for the waiting, will we be able to tell that they're doing that?
Yes, yes, we will.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Lindsey?
And this is not exactly a fiscal answer, but there is also a violation answer, which is, we have posted out there that if you're parking in an electric vehicle charging parking spot, if you're not charging, you're actually in violation of the parking statute that we have out there too. So there is another mechanism to have somebody go be warned, hey, you can't be here if you're not charging.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Christopher?
So I don't remember the background on this. And is this our program? We, did we initiate this?
The charging stations are actually a grant from the federal government and the state of Oregon. So the upgrading from the level one station that we had, which no one used, to the level two, which we're getting a fair amount of activity with.
Is that because of speed or what?
Correct. Yeah. The level one was just too slow to really be effective at charging a vehicle.
Okay.
And so with the level two, you, you can get a full charge in, you know, two or three hours. So it's a significant upgrade for us. But these were all paid for with grant proceeds.
Okay. And follow up. So at 30 cents per kilowatt hour, where, where did we get that amount?
That was the middle range that was recommended to us. In this area, we're seeing 20 cents to 40 cents of, as a range. So we kind of took the middle point with the idea that we would review it for the next several months and see if we need to adjust to any higher or lower depending on the usage.
So what other government buildings, like does the Salem City Hall have charging stations?
That I don't know. We could look in.
It's under construction. Okay. And, and we don't know what?
Yeah, I don't think they do.
No, it's under construction.
Well, I know that too.
They, they have some at their public works and parks facilities.
And what do they charge?
That I don't know.
Okay. I would be interested to know that as well as are there other government buildings that have these charging stations and what do they charge? And I'm not saying I want to be the highest and I'm not saying I want to be the lowest. I would, I would sure like some consistency though. So I mean, I mean, I'm not, I'm gonna, I, I'm absolutely going to vote for this, but I, as part of our, how, how long are we going to watch it for? What did we say?
Three to six months.
Three to six months. Okay, great. So then when, in three to six months, I'd like to have that information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilor Jaren.
This is just a comment. After we spoke about this last month, a couple of us were standing out in the parking lot and I see a car come in and I go, hmm, I wonder what they're doing here. And another car behind them, they pulled into a parking spot, plugged their car in, another car picked them up and they went home. So it was being, it was definitely being used and they were getting freebies at that time. So I, I definitely think this is warranted and, and the, the leaving the vehicle there after it's charging, I think we definitely want to know what's going on with that and, get a, a report on that in the next three to six months so that we can make the decision on whether that is something that needs to be followed up on.
Definitely.
And I picked up on your comments saying that parking there, once charging is complete, or if they're not charging, is a violation already?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And what is the consequence of that violation?
Wait, once it's complete?
Yeah.
I don't think that's what you said. You said you must be charging.
Yeah, there's, it could either be complete or you could just park a non-electric vehicle there and it would also be a violation.
But the difference in what the mayor's.
So my question actually was to Chief. Thank you.
It's both. I could also say this, there is a mechanism, just to refresh our recollection from last time we talked about this, there is the potential to put a fee on it if they, if they park there and they get, they fill up and then they're full, you can start to say every five minutes you owe a certain amount just so it, you know, people move along too.
Which is what I think Mr. Wood was referring to when he said that we have the ability to, to do that with this. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And given the October information, you're seeing about a 45-minute on average wait period after someone's fully charged that they're still there.
That's not bad. Okay. Cool. Uh, Councilor Christopher?
But is it a violation if they are full and stayed there? So it's the same as if they were not charging at all?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. That's what I didn't understand.
Checking. Okay. Council President Starr?
Can we, I know you said three to six months. I'm really anxious to see what the first three months show. So could we calendar a three-month report on what we're finding on kind of habits and practices of parking and so forth? Three months would be great.
Sure. Absolutely.
Thank you. Just to remind me, how many charging stations do we have?
We have two stations with four ports.
Fantastic. Right. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Did I open the public hearing, Ms. Biset? Okay. So that's our questions and comments. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this issue? I'm seeing none. Council members, do you have any additional questions before we go to a motion? Council President, oh, okay. Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr, would you please put a motion on the table?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Adopting User Fees for the Kaiser Electric Vehicle Charging Stations.
Shockingly second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, Adopting User Fees for the Kaiser Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Let's go then to a public hearing. Item 8B, open a public hearing on an order in the matter of the amendment of rates for franchise solid waste collection within the City of Kaiser effective as of January 1, 2026. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. In front of you is a request from our solid waste haulers to have a price increase effective January 1, 2026. They are asking for a 2.1% across-the-board increase. And they did not get an increase on July 1 of this year. still have some unknowns out there in terms of cost and that is really going to be the, the tipping fee if it's changed at the county facility. But they, they have been able to realize some savings from what they were using, the resource center, center on, in Brooks. Now they're using the Salem Recycling Center, which has saved some money. They plan on keeping their resource facility available for downtime on the Salem Resource, They plan on keeping their resource facility available for downtime on the Salem resource, Salem Recycling Center. So their request was originally 3%, but they were able to come back with a 2.1% request.
Well, okay.
And the members from Lorenz and Valley Recycling are here to answer questions, and also I'll sit for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Brown before we invite up our guests? All right. I'd like to invite up our representatives from Lorenz and Valley. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Glad to be back.
I'll let you decide, rock, paper, scissors, who goes first?
Just depends on the questions.
If you just want to introduce yourself, so for our viewers, so they know who you are, and just a little bit of background.
Yeah, Greg Dittman, Valley Recycling and Disposal.
Sean Edmonds, I'm with Lorenz Sanitation, North Marion.
So this is, you've been working on this all year and working to keep rates down as much as possible, and this is the number that you've arrived at to keep things flowing smoothly. You want to talk a little bit about that? And then I have a follow-up question on the recycling modernization.
Yeah, sure. Just to reiterate, what we talked about last time is basically that we're asking for a marginal 2.1%, which we feel is, you know, a fairly low number, especially if you look at CPI and things of that nature, and where things are looking to end up, which is basically about 3%. But like Adam alluded to, we've been able to take full advantage of the RMA, and we were having to pay for our recycling at our resource recycling center. And now we are able to go over to another location, used to be the Garden Facility, which is now the Salem Recycling Center, at a cost of zero. So that saves quite a bit. So we were initially coming in, you know, for about a double, that 4% or so, and the only caveat, again, like we talked about last time, is we don't know what Marion County's going to do in terms of a potential increase in the disposal fee. And we don't know if that's going to be three months, six months, so we felt it was appropriate to go ahead and move forward with what we do know, and, you know, request an increase of 2.1% for the services that we provide to all of the customers in the community.
All right. Thank you very much. So following up on, as you referred to, the RMA, the Recycling Modernization Act, there's a lot more things that we are now able to recycle again, and where can people get more information on what can go in that wonderful blue can to properly recycle?
Yeah. The flyers that we discussed the last time we were in actually went out over the weekend, the first round. And I did notice on the city's newsletter, they were in there as well. So that information has gone out. And just a general update about where we're at with the Modernization Act. DEQ enforcement, I think we mentioned last time, is going to be kicking into gear at the first of the year. There is a lot of decisions that have been made within city staff about how to go about meeting DEQ's requirements for contamination reduction, and that's what they're focusing on for the first year. Valley and Lorenz are a little ahead of the curve in that many of the requirements that could be chosen were already being met by having cameras on the hoppers and kind of an automated feedback loop from the drivers to the customers. So we think we're sitting pretty well on that. I think one thing that would be important, just to remind the public about, is that we have our list for the blue carts and the depots that we manage. There is an entirely separate list, and so if people are looking for information on the internet, it can be a little confusing, because there are going to be depots around Marion County where other things are collected. And we just want to, I don't even really want to mention the things that they're going to take, so that we're not creating more confusion, but I just want to encourage people to be very focused on the list that the haulers are sending out, that USCL Uniform State Collection List. We just want to make sure that everybody understands those are the things that can go in the blue cart or in our depots.
Thank you very much. Questions from Councilor Kohler, and then Council President Starr, and then Councilor Christopher?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've been attending some Marion County solid waste meetings, and they indicated at the meeting last week that they're looking at a $3 per can, no matter the size, because of the $5 million shortfall from the incinerator. And so is that, is that $3 going to be in addition to what you're talking about?
Well, I would think the $3 fee that you're mentioning is actually funds that are provided. Part of the function of the Modernization Act was to make the producers of packaging responsible financially, to make sure that those things went to market, responsible markets. And so that $3 per resident is actually a fund, that's funding that's going to come to enable education and things like that. And so the county and the haulers are in discussion about how best to use that. They haven't made a firm decision yet. There have been a few different ideas kicked around, but it's something that will be decided here pretty soon, because we're getting close to the deadline, yeah.
Follow-up.
Follow-up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know that that's not a firm decision, $3 a cart at this point, but it was, sounded pretty serious.
Well, it's not a fee that's being charged to the customer, it's funding that's coming from the producers, if I'm understanding what you're talking about.
Good, because I don't know if I'm understanding what I'm talking about either. But I know I'm sitting in the meeting, and they're going, $3 a cart, and I'm going, holy smoke, we're just talking about a couple percent increase now, is that going to be, you know, so.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's not related to the rate increase at all, and it's funding provided by the producers of packaging to educate the public, and there again, potentially help us a little bit with the expense of educating customers, because it is quite a process. And it's been a confusing couple of years trying to sort through those expectations and make the best decision for Kaiser residents, so.
Thank you. Council President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's a lot of angst right now amongst families, given some of the challenges with SNAP benefits. I mean, we heard some news tonight, but just ongoing, right, as the government shutdown continues. Is there any decisions or any conversations ongoing within your businesses about supporting? Because we have federal workers who are furloughed, we have people that are likely having to choose between, you know, we talked about last week, buying food or paying their water bill. Now it's, you know, maybe paid now between food and paying their garbage bill. Is there any conversations going on about how to support our families that are really struggling right now amidst the government shutdown and the unknown regarding SNAP benefits, depending?
Absolutely. Like you, we have a lot of sentiment, you know, for the community, and certainly are very aware of. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, we actually have talked to, over email with Adam Brown and Tim Wood about this particular topic. And like the city of Kaiser, Lorenz and Valley would like to align ourselves with basically the same process and make sure that, you know, if we do have those individuals that are in need, that they, you know, as long as they let us know and, you know, provide some sort of proof that, you know, in terms of the SNAP benefits and things of that nature, we would absolutely forego any type of, you know, additional collection on their garbage services. And all we ask is that, it sounds like some of the SNAP benefits are now back, are going to be partially funded at least, but that within, you know, 30 to 60 days, that, you know, we reinstate them and things of that nature. But no, we're certainly empathetic to that as well, and want to make sure that we're being good stewards to the community and align ourselves with the city of Kaiser as well.
Wonderful. Thank you so much to both Lorenz and Valley for understanding and caring, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Great question. Appreciate that very much. Councilor Christopher?
So when was the last time that we had an increase from the, I'm sorry? It was last year, 2024?
January, yeah, was it? 1/25. Testing our memories.
I know.
It seemed like we had a two-stage.
January 1st of '24.
January 1st of '24?
Yeah.
And that was?
25.
Oh.
It's right here. It's in the background.
Okay. I just, okay. And that was what percentage?
I believe on top it had about 3%.
That's what I thought, too. Okay, great. And so now, this is an additional 2.1%, which, great, it's, we thought it was, it was less than what we had anticipated, but that is still a big jump. And I know that you have justified it and told us why you're going to take that jump. Here's my question. How long will this 5.1% be in effect? Or when is the next time that we can anticipate that our fees are going to, is it going to become an annual situation? I know prior to January, it had been a little while, I want to say two to three years? Was, hadn't it been?
Well, it's been very sporadic, and to that end, yeah, the 2.1% that we're requesting now is we want to get, definitely get into a cadence where we're coming in on an annual basis, because inflation is real, the cost, you know, that we have to incur to run our business with the purchase of new trucks and, you know, wages for our employees and things of that nature. It's incumbent upon us to make sure that we can do the right thing and continue to provide good quality service to, you know, all of our residents. So yes, we will be coming in every year, and then just depending upon, you know, inflation and things of that nature. But now it should be leveling off, you know, because in the past, we were having to play catch-up, because we weren't in here every year.
Okay. So that's what we can anticipate moving forward, that we're going to see you once a year, and you're going to tell us what the increase is, that our folks will be given notice, as Councilor Starr requested, at least a couple months' notice, that the rates are increasing, and it'll probably happen somewhere around the same time? So I think we're going to see you next November?
Yes, exactly. Yes, everyone gets used to it, it's every January, and, you know, I mean, on the widely used services, it's only about 80 cents for the resident for their services. So we feel it's a very reasonable ask, and, you know, we're appreciative of the fact that we're having the discussion today.
Yeah, and I really was more concerned with what can we anticipate moving forward? So what I heard you say is, we're going to see you every year, it'll be November-ish, and the new rates will be in effect in January-ish. And that's really what my question was about, so thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That is, I've got one comment, and I'll go to Councilor Cross. That is barring any changes that are decided upon by Marion County, because they're the ones who control the tipping fees and other key factors that go into the cost of providing service. Would that be correct?
That is correct, because that's a large cost of our, to run our businesses disposal. And so if they increase that, but rest assured, we'll be back in here and educating you and telling you why, and try to make sure that they're in here partnering with us to help, you know, facilitate that conversation for sure.
Yeah, that would be a good plan. Councilor Cross, and then I'll go to Councilor Kohler, and then I'll go to Councilor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When you were talking about that extensive recycling list, what did you call it? Or?
Well, those, yeah, the Uniform State Collection List, the USCL, that's the list that DEQ has established for all residential programs, the blue carts and depots that are not sponsored by the producers of packaging.
Is that on a one-sheet flyer that you could share?
Yeah.
And if you have it in English and Spanish, that would be great.
It's being mailed out to customers as we go.
And we also have them in our offices as well, so when customers come in.
Cool. If we could get a PDF of that, that'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's in the Chamber newsletter.
It is?
Yeah, it's already on, yeah, the Chamber published that this week as well.
Well, knowledge is power, so let's just get it out there.
Yeah. Councilor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just from attending all the meetings, that I've been privileged to, the trashy meetings I've been able to attend, the, I just, that's what I call it, but anyway, sorry. But I see that, you know, I'm working on being able to be a hauler, so.
It's a prerequisite.
Thank you for the work that you do. I can't imagine what our city would look like without what you do, so thank you very much.
That's a privilege.
Thank you. Council President Starr?
And I just, you had projected, I just want to make sure every, we all hear this, you had projected a 3%, and you came back lower than that. So again, I just want to say thank you for doing what you can for residents and keeping the costs down, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? All right. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to address the council under this public hearing? Because I don't have anybody signed up. Okay, seeing none. Any further questions that the council needs answered before I close the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Council President Starr?
I move that Kaiser City Council adopt the order in the matter of the amendment of rates for franchise solid waste collection within the city of Kaiser, effective January 1, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt order in the matter of the amendment of rates for franchise solid waste collection within the city of Kaiser, effective as of January 1, 2026. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. That takes us to administrative action. It is, oh, that's, no, it's 7 o'clock, never mind. I should not look at that clock. We will continue on to item 9A, which is Administrative Action Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Sign Grant Agreement for Kaiser Rapids Park Synthetic Turf Fields Project, Phase 3. Mr. Brown?
Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Wood has this item.
Okay. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, I feel like I'm stealing Adam's thunder. He did most of the work on this, along with some of you folks as well. Anyway, tonight, we have the grant agreement from the state of Oregon. They're giving us $750,000 to be used for the Kaiser Rapids Park, Phase 3, for the turf field. So this is an exciting project for us, and with that, I'd be free to address any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the report or the grant agreement itself? Just one thing I wanted to, to at least emphasize. So all of these funds have to be expended by the end of the biennium, which is June 30 of '27, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So this is scheduled, all things working out to go to construction next year?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Kohler, did I see your hand?
You did, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood, every grant has some kind of a thing that we had, some agreement that we have to do in order to receive the grant. Is there any things attached to this that we need to be aware of? I didn't see it in the report.
There is some ongoing reporting that we'll have to do, but the nice thing about this is they give us the money upfront, so it's not a reimbursement grant, which is very special. And I'm very appreciative of the state of Oregon.
Cool, thank you.
And if I remember correctly, this was a request by our state representative, Kevin Mannix, that he put into a House bill, I think we call it the Christmas Tree Bill, to provide these funds for this particular project. So big thanks to our state representative for helping bring this project to full build out, which is a benefit for our entire region.
Yes, and this was the one where our students, they were with Council President Starr, presented that, so that was very special.
Yep. Wonderful testimony by the young little cross players, is that correct?
Yeah, they came in clutch at the last minute and were, just handled it so with charisma, charm, grace under pressure, so super proud of our students. And this is just an exciting moment to get the money and be able to sign, approve the grant agreement, so kudos to our, to our students.
Indeed. Any further questions? Council President Starr, would you please put the motion on the table?
Gladly. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, authorizing the city manager to sign the grant agreement for Kaiser Rapids Park Synthetic. to sign the grant agreement for Kaiser Rapids Park Synthetic Turf Field Project, Phase 3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, authorizing city manager to sign grant agreement for Kaiser Rapids Park Synthetic Turf Field Project, Phase 3. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Let's go to item 9B, Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Sign Letter of Intent with Akam, okay, Akam Veer Real Estate LLC, Kaiser Station, Area C-1. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council members. This is an opportunity for us to dispose of some city property between McLeod, Shamawa Road, and Lockhaven. Otherwise, we refer to it as the Big Triangle, or in Kaiser Station Master Plan, it's referred to as Property C1. It is owned, approximately half of it by the city of Kaiser, and the other half is, is basically one owner under a, many different LLCs. But we've worked collaboratively with that other property owner to market the property together and try to sell it together. The, this is a letter of intent that both parties are anxious to jump right into a purchase and sale agreement. And this letter of intent tightens the timeline down to 90 days, unless they are waiting on the city processes to work through. Otherwise, we should be able to close in 90 days. So we're excited. The price is not in here because it'll be based on a master assessor level property appraisal. And we expect that to be in probably the end of November, beginning of December for that appraisal amount to be in. So once we get that, we, parties have agreed that that would be the basis for the price point on it. And then we divide it up according to the property, square feet of property by each owner and the zoning of each one. In that breakdown also, it should be provided, the value of each parcel by the property appraisal. So we're asking for you to approve this letter of intent so we can work on the purchase and sale agreement with our city attorney and, and their attorney. And with that, happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Brown? Counsel President Starr?
Because I'm directionally challenged, this is the Big Triangle.
This is the Big Triangle.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I should have mentioned, too, that I've been working with our colleague Eric Moyer on this with the purchaser. And so it's been a great help to work together.
Been many moving parts. We appreciate all of the effort that's gone into this. Counselor Kohler, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is, is with this agreement, we are not required to level the property, the, the real estate that's on there, the housing, the house?
We have been talking about doing the demolition on the houses, but not worry about the grading of it. There's, you know, a substantial hill in the middle of it, and it's mostly on the other property owner's side. We had wanted to do that to market it better. But having this offer now, we probably won't do the grading, but would recommend demolishing the houses just to stop the, any tagging or violate homeless encampments in the structures. So that's, that's the plan. Which we'll need your approval when we get to that.
Follow-up?
Yes, please, thank you. My understanding was is that we were going to do the abatement reports, but that we weren't going to have to do the demolition.
We, yeah, we're doing the debatement reports and testing and abatement at this right time, right now. But as Eric and I have talked, we've been, our recommendation is going to be able to do, is going to be to do the demolition. And then we would recollect that, that amount of money at the time, point of sale from the other party of it. So, but ultimately, that, that would come back to you. So we'll, we'll have an opportunity to opine on whether we should do that or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did note over the weekend that one of the properties was tagged. So the removal of those structures as soon as possible would seem to be in the public interest as well, from my point of view. I did have one question and then I'll check for anybody else who has a question. The zoning of this particular property was, is there any anticipation that there will be a need for a zone change for the use that the buyer has in mind? Or are they going to be working within the current zoning, either outright or conditional?
So the intent is to work within the zoning. It will require, though, another master plan amendment. And within that, there, there could be some shifts that's possible in the parcels where they're zoned. But the east side of it is mixed use and, which was also on C2, which was mixed use on the east southern side of Shamawa Road. And that was predominantly what's built now is housing. And so there's, as Mr. Witham and I have talked, is we can consider that whole area as mixed use and not those specific ones. So we may be able to have more commercial uses in that area since the other property that was developed, the Bonaventure and the apartments, were predominantly housing.
So putting it in maybe a simple term for me is that the mix of uses in Area C, a chunk of it on the residential use has been used up. So now we can lean toward the commercial retail with the rest of it?
Right.
So the mix of uses in that space?
Yeah, that's the idea. But again, we'll have to go through the master plan and Planning Commission and you guys.
But not, not anticipating that needing a zone change like we talked about in a previous proposal?
My understanding is, yeah, the, I believe, I haven't seen plans or anything like that, but we have shared the information on, you know, the mixed-use zone is a pretty flexible zone. It allows for commercial uses and residential-type uses. The west half of the, the C2 triangle is a commercial zone. It's not a mixed-use zone. So my understanding is, is that the interested party is looking at how to design that site to propose uses that would be allowed outright in the zoning as it currently is written. But as Mr. Brown alluded to, right now, there's a master plan that calls out that site in a certain way that I think is from 2015 or '17 or something like that. So they definitely are going to want to look at reimagining that site, which will look at the whole of Area C, which would include Bonaventure property and the Mountain West apartments, as well as the whole area around St. Croix. So there will be an opportunity with public hearings at the Planning Commission and before council, going through quasi-judicial land use process to change that master plan. Does that, does that help?
It does, thank you. Counselor Duran?
Shane, the, if I'm, if I'm correct, there is no exclusion on this property for vehicle use or associated, as in a gas station, as there was in Area B. Is that correct?
I will say, yes, that's, that's correct. And the Area B and that specific zoning, which is a commercial mixed-use zone, different than across the street, which is a commercial general zone. That zoning had the specific use restriction that called out a handful of uses that just straight up were not allowed in Area B. Area C does not have that same language. However, it doesn't mean that all the uses in one zone are the exact same uses in the other zones. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that there was no exclusions like we had to talk about there.
Yeah, no, the only thing would be is if a use that was proposed is just currently not listed in either the mixed-use zone or that commercial underlying zone, that would be an issue.
Area B had kind of a special.
Yes, yes.
You know, long-term discussions, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And that is not currently anything on this parcel.
Correct, correct. That Area B kind of carried forward the really old Shamawa River Road restriction, kind of same concept, so.
I just, I just wanted people to be aware of that. When, when proposals come out, we may not have any, anything to say about it.
Correct. Okay. Any further questions? Counsel President Starr, would you please put the motion on the table?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, authorizing the city manager to sign a letter of intent with Akam Veer Real Estate LLC for Kaiser Station Area C-1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R2025, authorizing city manager to sign a letter of intent with Akam Veer Real Estate LLC, Kaiser Station Area C1. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying no. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. That concludes administrative action. We are now go to other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Brown, does staff have any additional other business this evening?
Madam Mayor, did we, did we cover the item most pulled from the consent agenda? And address that item B?
It, yes, it was.
That's covered, I know. Heard that gavel.
Yeah. She grabbed the gavel.
She gavelled it, yeah.
I stepped away for a moment, so, yes, it was taken care of.
Okay, I just had, it was in my notes, so.
No, Madam Mayor and Council, we have no other items of business for you tonight.
Council members, does anybody else have other business to bring up this evening? Seeing none? Staff updates? We'll start with Mr. Cleaver.
None here.
Mr. Brown?
I just want to say thank you to the council for allowing me to get away with my family and also to the amazing staff here that I really didn't worry about what was going on because they were in great hands. So thank you so much.
Yes. Tim came through. Windstorm and all.
It was a little sketchy there for a few minutes.
Yeah.
A couple updates, if I get a moment. So we're in the middle of the sewer reset, both north and south parts of town. We're in the heat of battle. So conserve water, all that you possibly can. By saving water now, you'll have a lower fixed sewer rate for the rest of the year and your pocketbook will be happy. So I know we're hitting into the holiday season, but no pool parties or hot tub get-togethers. That will save your pocketbook. Wait until February, March to engage in those activities again. Also, as Counsel President Starr alluded to with the sanitation folks, city of Kaiser, our utilities, if folks are being impacted by the government shutdown, loss of SNAP benefits, reach out to the city. We can give you a hand with your utility bill. We are going to temporarily not do any shut-offs of service. So if you're, have any issues, please let us know and we can work with you. And once the government is back up and running, we can work on a reasonable payment plan to get everyone back into good graces with everyone. Also, if you're looking to donate, if, in light of the situation, the Kaiser Community Food Bank is always looking for donations. And the city also partners with St. Vincent de Paul to provide utility assistance. We're still working out how to get the funds to St. Vincent de Paul. But if you want to give the city a call, it's kind of weird, we go via the St. Edwards Church. So we kind of have to figure out how all of that's going to work out. But if you're interested, please contact the city. And you can just reach us at our direct line, 503-390-3700. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Ms. Biset?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Chief?
Just one thing of note for us, I mean, there's, we're busy. You got the city manager's report, kind of our activities. But we want to welcome back Jill Brooks. He was gone for a year, deployed in the National Guard over in Egypt. And so he came back to us today. So today was his first day back to work. He will not see him in uniform for a while because DPSST really wants some training done before he does that. So we have to get him caught up on some certifications and some different training so that he can join the other officers on the road. But it's good to have him back.
Please extend our thanks for his service. Thank you. Mr. Lawyer?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, Bill, do you want to talk about our opening? Open position? Okay.
Mr. Cleaver?
I just want to note that we are hiring in public works municipal utility labor. It's a fantastic opportunity because it's an entry-level position. Get tons of training, lots of exposure to the whole public works field. And that opened on Friday and will close in about two weeks. And that, that's on our city website. You can just go to the city website and find the employment application there.
All right, fantastic. Thank you so much. KaiserOR.gov. Thank you. Mr. Witham?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Lindsey?
I'll go with nothing tonight as well.
All right. Nothing, nothing tonight for the, for the win.
Thank you.
Let's go to council member reports. We'll start with Counselor Duran.
I will keep it the same. Nothing for me.
All right. Counselor Christopher?
I want to remind folks that we have two open positions on the Kaiser Public Arts Commission. This is really unusual because usually, we're a really fun committee. And we do a lot of fun stuff. So usually, we're full. If you are an artist, or even if you're art-adjacent, we would love to have you join us. We've got some fun stuff coming up. We've got some really great projects coming up for 2026, and you'll want to be a part of it. It's a 12-hour commitment a year. Our, our meetings usually last an hour, I mean, 90 minutes maybe every once in a while. But it's a very minimal commitment for a very maximum impact. So I'd like to invite you to join us. Also, if you are an artist and you have a design for the holiday cards, that contest is currently open. This year's holiday card has already been selected from one of our community members. But this is for next year's holiday card, and that is open until 3/1. So if your children, we've, we've selected student art at least twice. So I want to encourage that. And the last and not least is, we have money to pay for utility reps. And we can do three of them between now and June 30th. So that information is also on the website, KaiserOR.gov. And you can find that under the committees, under K-PAC. And you can submit art. The artists receive $200 for their efforts. And then all of their information is also on the art. And so if they have a website, we've got a QR code to take folks right to their website to try to help out our local artists. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Kaiser Heritage Foundation has an annual meeting coming up? On the 18th?
They do. They do. What would you like to know about that?
So as our representative to that board, I just want to let people know that, that meeting is coming up and anybody who's involved with any of the Kaiser Heritage organizations?
Well, you've got to be a member. And the member are the, is the Kaiser 100 folks. Those are the members. So in order to vote, you'd have to be a member. But you can certainly come. And we'll have a few little treats. And we will tell you what we're planning for next year and we'll, and we'll tell you what's going on this year. We have to elect officers and we have to pass a budget. That's all we have to do. And thanks for reminding me.
You bet. Always glad to promote our Kaiser Cultural Center and the four great organizations that are in that building. And thank you for representing us on that board. Counsel President Starr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Copeland, would you please extend a huge gratitude and appreciation to Officer Brooks' family, Military Families Month? And so that was a huge lift, I'm sure. So please extend the, that gratitude. Also, December 2nd is the tree lighting at Wallery Plaza. So mark your calendars for that evening.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Oh, okay.
And then the 13th of December is the Holiday Lights Parade. And the theme this year is Lights, Camera, Action: A Hollywood Holiday. So you, your theme, the theme to, so pick your favorite Christmas movie, you know, Die Hard?
Yeah.
Or.
That's Ronnie's.
Or Christmas TV show, whatever that might be, and, and have fun decorating. So it should be fun to see those leg lamps.
That will be a ton of fun for sure.
What time is this, is the parade start?
Seven.
Seven, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thanks, Mayor.
That's because I read the bulletin from the Chamber today.
The newsletter.
Yep. Comes out every Monday, which I really appreciate. Counselor Cross?
Well, I will just piggyback on Counselor Starr and talk about Veterans Day and the veterans events that are coming next week. So, again, tell your officer thank you to, for his service, and thank you for, to him and his family for their sacrifice. Monday is the Marines 250th Birthday Ball Celebration at the Convention Center. Everyone can attend, they're having a dinner from 6 to 8, and then Stay Alive Veterans will have their event on November 11th, and there's still tickets available, and that's at the Convention Center also. That's it.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. So, I appreciate you being able to go to the Police Task Force meeting, see all the wonderful things that are going on with our police department, and the hard work that's happening there. Thank you for that. And of course, I already mentioned, got to go to the Marion County Solid Waste Meeting. It was really thrilling. And one of the, one of the things that happened this last couple of weeks for me is I had an opportunity to sit down with a World War II veteran, and it was pretty amazing, and because I would say, gosh, where, where did you serve? And he talked about being in the Pacific. Where in the Pacific were you? I was in the Battle of Midway. Okay, and then what happened after that? And he talked about all the different islands that they were on, and he said, fortunately, I was there for most of it at the end and was doing cleanup rather than the battle part. 99 years old, sharp as a tack. It was really amazing to do that. Today, I met with a Vietnam veteran who was not sharp as a tack, but still talked a little bit about the, the work that they did in Vietnam, and, and I just think it's important for those who are veterans to please take an opportunity, explain to your family and children what you've had to go through in order for us to have the freedom that we have today.
Well said, sir. Thank you. Just a couple of things to add. On the 27th, I was privileged to be at the ribbon cutting for the Marion County Behavioral Health Crisis Center. This is a huge step forward for the delivery of services and consolidation of staff in a building that will really help them do their job and provide improved services for people in our community who are, need those services. So, congratulations to Marion County on this step forward. It was also a pleasure to join with people in Kaiser and Salem celebrating 25-year anniversary of Willamette Valley Bank, a locally owned and operated bank that has been here and done great work for businesses, families, and for our nonprofits. So, congratulations to 25 years of success at Willamette Valley Bank. On the 30th, I had the privilege of attending the League of Minority Voters Dinner with Daryl Fuller, a very busy volunteer throughout our community, notably with the Kaiser Fire District and the Red Cross. So, he invited me to join him there. He is also a member of the board for the League of Minority Voters. I really appreciated being able to hear from speakers who are really looking at bipartisan collaborative work in our communities to bring us together to solve our problems and build communities together. I want to thank Ms. Bisset for putting online the If I Were Mayor Contest for 2026 is now open. The entries are due April 6th, and this is posters for elementary essays for middle school and video essays for high school. Please go to Kaiser, KaiserOR.gov for more information. Classroom activities are encouraged, and if a student, a teacher would like to have a speaker come in to talk about what it is to be a city, happy to find one of us to go and make a presentation to that class. Always enjoy that so much. Also, coming up, we've got a lot of work for the Midvalley County Council of Governments. Thank you for letting me represent Kaiser on that board, as they're doing a tremendous amount of work on the organization finances, delivery of services, and continuity for that organization in the interim between executive directors. On the 6th, will be a volunteer reception and recognition for a lot of our environmental programs. They're gonna have a wonderful local band, Old Brown Coat, some refreshments, and the opportunity to thank so many of our volunteers who have done projects in our parks, Trashy Tuesday, Native Plantings, all sorts of great events like that, and our Adopt a Street and Adopt a Storm Drain programs. So, November 6th, right here at 6, actually, I think it's at 5:30. Expo Negocios will be here on the 13th. This is the Latino Business Alliance Annual Business Event, always extremely well-attended, right here at our Civic Central, be running from 8 to 3 on the 13th. If you haven't registered, they still have some spaces open, it is filling up, really encourage businesses to come and be a part of that. And that is all I have among other, oh, Sebel, the Community Business and Education Leaders, they will be at the rec on the 6th, starting at 8:00 AM sharp, and there's still time to register for that as well. That is all I have for right now. Yes, Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received a message from Counselor Parsons who said that there's a free veterans dinner at the Elks on the 9th, free for all vets and their families.
Thank you very much, and thank you for watching. Counselor Parsons, make sure we made that announcement. Thank you. Let's go to agenda input. Let's, the first item on the list is the Long Range Planning Task Force. Thank you to everybody for responding to our inquiry on availability. So, the recommendation is to move this to December 8th. We have another work session scheduled for that night, so stand by on that topic, but are we all agreed to move our Long Range Planning Task Force from November 10th to December 8th?
Yes.
Did you send that out and ask us?
Yes. Yeah, there was, there was a poll. Ms. Bisset reached out to us on that, actually, reached out to everybody on the task force, and it looks like December 8th is a better night for everybody. So, we'll consider that, that done. So, we will not have a work session on November 10th, and the Long Range Planning Task Force will meet then on December 8th, starting at 6:00 PM. The topic that was on the list for December 8th is on the Utah property. So, we need to have that conversation. So, what we would like to do is tag like about a half hour after our December 15th council meeting to have that conversation and get the information from staff so they can keep moving forward. There are some financial considerations that go with this development of this property, and they need to get that information from us. So, is there any objection to moving that work session topic to the end of December 15th regular council meeting? Okay, we will go forward with that plan. Thank you very much. Then, on November 17th, we will meet at 6:00 PM in regular session, and then on December 1st, we will meet at 6:00 PM again in regular session. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? All right, the time is 7:30, and we are adjourned.